Okay, welcome everyone. This is a public hearing of the City of Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is May 24, 2010, and this public hearing is open to anybody who would like to address the board at the appropriate time. The board just requested if you do address the board, if you could state your name and address for the record so that we don't have to interrupt you, and then you can keep speaking. So you also have to sign in at the podium, just your name and your address, so we have an accurate record as to who spoke at this public hearing. There are several matters on, and we're going to take them in order, as listed on the agenda, that most of you probably do have a copy of. So we'll begin with ZB 2010-000011, special permit variance for signs. This is a continuance. Barlow Signs is the applicant or the agent for the applicant, and the property address is 661 Rogers Street. This is located in a regional retail district, and the petitioner would like to replace the existing reader board sign with a changeable electronic reader board ground sign which exceeds the allowable size for Hogan Tire pursuant to sections 6.3, 6.39D, 6.38B, and 6.312 of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Sullivan?
Good evening. My name's Tim Sullivan. I'm an employee of Barlow Signs out of Hudson, New Hampshire. It was recommended at the last meeting that we get together with DPD and discuss it a little bit, what we were willing to give up, or what they were willing to work with us to try to come with a solution for the electronic message center that we're proposing at the Hogan Tire property. What I've done is I've put together a video, which I'd like to show the board, and then I can set it up so the public can see it also. I think part of the, a little bit of the board's concern is that they're not sure what this is going to look like. You're used to seeing these signs out there, you're used to seeing how they change, they scroll, they blink. So if I may, I'd like to present this to the board, have them have a look at it. It's about a minute long, because what I've done is I've set it up for a 30-second message that fades off and a new message comes on for 30 seconds. Just so you can kind of get a feel for, I know there was some time considerations at the last meeting, what would you go, five minutes, would you go a day? I kind of want the board to see how long, in fact, 30 seconds actually is when you're in the environment. So may I approach?
Yes, you may. So we've agreed beforehand that Mr. Sullivan from Barlow Signs can show us this one-minute video. He's as short as it only lasts a minute, so we'll look at it. I asked him if he's going to show it to us, that he has to show it to the public, so he's going to show it to you folks, anybody who's interested in taking a look at it. Unfortunately, at home, I don't know who can see it, but we'll basically outline what it was for anybody at home who's interested, so, okay. Okay. For anybody listening at home, Mr. Sullivan showed us a one-minute video with the message board that changes every 30 seconds, and basically it showed a message fading in and fading out at the 30-second increments. He's now showing the video to anybody in the audience who would like to take a look at it. And folks, if you can't see it and you want to look at it, you're welcome to walk over, get as close to it as you'd like.
Thank you for allowing me to show that. I think the fact of the matter here at this property is, after talking with Rachel about what we're willing to concede and where we're willing to go with it, the fact of the matter is presently on that property, there's an existing internally illuminated pylon sign that is illuminated until midnight seven nights a week. Our proposal is to back that illumination time down to 8:00 PM and only operate it six days a week, not have it operating on Sunday. The existing sign has a, let me find my notes here, has a reader board portion of the sign, which is 33.1 square feet. Our proposal is 26 square feet. So not only are we willing to reduce the hours of operation of the sign, but we're also reducing the overall size of that sign. With that being said, we're hoping that the board, now that they've kind of seen a video, seen how these boards operate, or how we're proposing to operate this board in the field, I hope the board would see that it's not quite such a traffic hazard as is one of the concerns with this board. Seeing as the fact that the board really doesn't change drastically in a matter of a minute or two minutes, that's what we're hoping the board sees this evening and understands. There was some concern with the hardship on the property, and does he really have a hardship? Well, his property, if you know how it sets, he has very small frontage, basically, and it goes a long way into his building. His building goes a long way onto his property. Right now, he has a good-sized sign. If the board was to deny him this message center this evening, he would still have that size sign, and he would have that sign operating as it presently is operating. That's till midnight seven days a week. So we're hoping that if the board is concerned with the neighborhood and the effects of this type of sign on the neighborhood, or the effect of any signs on the surrounding neighborhood, I would think it would be beneficial for the city if the sign is actually shutting off at 8:00 PM versus running till midnight seven days a week. So that was our original proposal. As we stated earlier in the last meeting, he's got a major competitor moving in right down the, right over the line in Tewksbury, in Town Fair Tire. He's very concerned that he's going to start losing some potential customers to Town Fair Tire, and a company the size of Town Fair Tire, they have 78 locations regionally, where my client only has six. So Town Fair Tire has a little bit higher advertising budget, I would imagine, so they can get their name out there. And Town Fair, I think, we can all agree, is a little bit more commonly known as a tire distributor. And on the other side of his property, he has a Jiffy Lube, again, a competitor that he's competing with on a daily basis. Jiffy Lube has 2,000 stores nationwide. So again, it's, he's a smaller operation, six stores, and he's trying to do something to his property that will allow him to compete with some of these bigger businesses in his area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Before we open up the public, Rachel, would you like to respond? I know we did get correspondence from Rachel Kisker, who is our sign ordinance director.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
Again, my name is Rachel Kisker. I'm a design planner with the City of Lowell's Division of Planning and Development, and I was here at the last meeting and wrote a memo indicating that I would recommend denial of the sign, and then I listed some of the reasons, and I would say those reasons still stand. I did meet with Tim Sullivan, and I wrote a new memo, which I showed him ahead of time, although I only got it to the board earlier today. I did show it to him ahead of time, and I spoke to him in person over a week ago, and gave him sort of an outline last week, so I didn't surprise him with anything. And basically, and we talked about this together, I can't recommend to the board approval of this project. The things that I said last time still stand. I appreciate the video that he submitted for everyone to see. However, I think it doesn't really depict the actual real-life quality of a digital billboard. I think what that video shows is sort of simulating what it would be like to have a static two-dimensional board then swapped out with another one almost, you know, if you could do that magically or Photoshop-wise. I think a digital billboard in reality has a glow and a pixelation that you can't, is not captured in the video, although the video does show what the 30-second increment would look like to traffic and passerby's. Again, I would just reiterate the bullet points of the last memo. Already, as Mr. Sullivan even mentioned, already Hogan Tire has a very small frontage with very large signs. They are exceeding the maximum square feet allowed for a freestanding sign, and even though this sign will be slightly smaller than their existing white leaderboard, they're still well over twice the 30-square-foot limit. I think that it could impact traffic safety, and it will definitely impact aesthetics in that section of Rogers Street. And I think, you know, the purpose, although I appreciate business owners and their, and the problems and their goals, I think that, you know, the signs, as we see them in the city, are to show what is where and not necessarily to provide an element of competition with somebody in the next town. And I think that they have a lot of signage for a very small space there. So we would ask the board to consider denial of the application, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to respond just briefly, Mr. Sullivan? If you care to, you don't have to.
No, but I'm open to any questions that the board might have.
Okay. Anybody here wish to speak in favor, in favor of this petition? In favor and hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here like to speak in opposition? In opposition to this petition?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, my name is Mark Goldman, 58 Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass., and based on the recommendation of the Department of Planning and Development Design Planner, I urge that the board deny this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition and hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed, and now the public hearing is closed, and we will open up to the board for consideration. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, could I ask Rachel, come back up, sorry.
Hi.
I've read through the comments that you kind of spoke about, and there's a couple of things I'd like to maybe ask for a little bit of clarification. Pixelated glow, can you give me an example of what that is, or is there currently a sign in the city that has?
Well, I looked online to try to find some examples that I could bring, and I also asked if Barlow maybe could produce what this sign would look like at night, or even another example from maybe a sign that they've completed somewhere else. And what I'm talking about is the light, the quality of the light and the color isn't stagnant, it's not flat as if it was silk-screened, you know, because of the technology. I think it can get very small, but it still has that little look of dots, almost like, I don't know, an older TV set. And I think the glowing of those individual points of light is what makes it very different from a static illuminated sign. I think it has a light quality that's very different, and as I said, it is hard to describe, and these are the things that we're wrestling with over in DPD as we move forward in thinking about how we want the city to move with these signs in general. But that was what I was trying to express, that kind of, you know, when you see those signs and they're, you can really see the dots, I think, sometimes, and I know that that is also related to quality, so I don't mean to imply that it's not of high quality. And maybe some of the examples I've seen are of lower quality than what they're proposing. And since I'm up here, I'd also like to add, I wanted to look at the Jeep sign, which we approved a little while ago, and that's not up yet. So that was, you know, something else that kind of made me think, you know, maybe we could, we don't even have the chance to see how we feel about that sign being up yet, you know, it hasn't been installed, and I wanted to take a look at it and then kind of do what Mr. Sullivan did, maybe take a picture of that sign and then try to Photoshop it in front of the Hogan Tire site to try to get a sense of what it might look like, but that one hasn't been installed. So I think that would be another word of caution, that maybe the board would like some time to live with that sign and see how they like it.
So it has nothing to do with the type of equipment that they're using?
Well, he can talk to it, because obviously I'm not a sign designer. I think they all have it. In other words, it's not flat washes, for it to be changeable, it's little dots, like your TV set, but just more spread out. And I know you can specify, you know, them being closer together and farther apart, so he can talk to that, but I think unless it's in extremely, extremely, you know, television quality, you're always going to see those dots of light, and you're also always going to see that glow. I think, as I said, the video is showing something which I think depicts almost if you took a poster board, put it up, put up another one 30 seconds later, where you can imagine even in your mind's eye that if that was a TV screen, that has a different look than a 30-second silk-screened or painted, you know, poster board, and I think that's sort of what the video shows.
Yeah, because this board's approved other signs, not including, I won't include the one we just approved up the street, but we have included other signs, which I'm not really sure, I don't think you were on board.
Right, I don't think I was either. I know about them.
So when I see the term "pixelated glow," does that apply to all the other signs that are out there?
I think so, yes.
Have you taken a look at those?
Yeah, I have taken a look. I've looked at the one, I think, the insurance.
So they all fall in the same?
I think so, yes. But again, you know, perhaps I'm using some of the terminology incorrectly, I was trying to just illustrate to the board.
Now, when you say concerned with the look of this type of sign, what do you mean by that?
Well, as I said, I think the, both the movement, the glowing, it's akin to a TV screen, as opposed to what they have now, which is an internally lit, static board. I think about how that looks in terms of, I know it's Rogers Street, but it does happen to be near some residences. It's on a part of Rogers Street that's a little bit more low-key right now, and, you know, do we want to move in the direction of creating more light, more color, more movement on a street that's already very busy? So it's both in terms of, I don't know, what you would expect to see on this section of street. I think it's a little bit aesthetically more, it's more geared towards maybe a bigger strip, a bigger part of even Rogers Street, like at the Jeep dealership.
So the visual clutter falls within the same comments that you're making, right?
I think so, they're related. They're related, and also, as I said before, Hogan Tire has a small amount of frontage, so they've got a lot going on in a very small space. So that's, they're cluttered sort of on the site, I think, if they add this, and then it's kind of bringing that part of Rogers Street up to be more cluttered.
When you talk about the sign already exceeds the maximum square footage, now are you talking about the existing sign that's up there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Which I think Mr. Sullivan indicated before. I mean, that sign's went up there for a while, correct?
Right, and I, yeah, and Kim was nice enough to send me the original variants or special permit or both, and I actually thought it said 10 o'clock at night was what the timing, but I could have read that wrong. Yeah, if you add up everything that's on that freestanding configuration, even with the reduction that they're proposing, it would be 73 and a half or so square feet, you know, per face.
Right, but it's a pre-existing sign that's up there.
Yes, it is. Yeah, it is.
It doesn't meet the criteria you'd like to see, but it's pre-existing, correct?
Right. I guess the point I was trying to make is that they're already exceeding the code in these other ways. That's all I was trying to point out right there.
Okay. And the internally illuminated sign on the building, now, is that something that you have a concern with having that, plus having this new sign?
I just think it's a lot for one, you know, one site, and I think, again, I was more pointing out the variances. I think that's a special permit for an internally illuminated sign, that, you know, in the past they had been granted these permission to do things that exceeded the code, and this would just be one more thing with going into the realm of movable signs. You know, they've already hit excessive square footage, internally illuminated, so now they're taking it a step further to the movable. So all I was doing was pointing out what they have existing.
So the density of the commercial businesses kind of falls into this, in your opinion?
I think so, in my opinion, yes.
Okay. So you had mentioned about the 10 o'clock, that's been changed to 8 o'clock now, right? Originally, I had 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, now you've gone to 8:00 PM, right? And originally, you had 20 seconds, now you're at 30 seconds, is that correct also? And I guess the thing about the traffic safety seems to be, in your opinion, again, you think it could have an impact, and I think Mr. Sullivan made comments at our last meeting about studies that...
From what I've read, you can dig up studies that can support either case in my, from what I've seen online, so I think that's, you know, one of those arguments that could go back and forth.
That's all I have right now, Mr. Chairman, but I might have something else later.
Okay, no problem. Vesna?
No question.
And I guess my feeling on this, Mr. Sullivan, hasn't changed. I think that you don't really have a good case for the variance criteria. I just don't think it meets the, any criteria for variance, and I do think that that sign as proposed will have a detrimental effect on the surrounding neighborhood. It's a business that's right at the crest of a hill there, it's a kind of emerging spot where two lanes break down into one, and directly right across from that is a residential apartment building and some residential homes. So it's not something that I intend on supporting, but that's really all I have to say. Corey?
Yes, so you, Mr. Chairman. I, like you, Mr. Chairman, I have the same concerns. I thank Mr. Sullivan for his proposal, and my concern was not so much what the sign was going to look like. I mean, I can envision that, I got a good picture of what it's going to look like, but the big issue to me was the traffic safety and the impact on the neighborhood, and that, frankly, hasn't changed. You know, as the chairman stayed, I'm going to echo his opinion that I made two weeks ago. You're coming from 495, there's a hill going up that merges into one lane, it's very densely populated regarding businesses, I just think this aesthetically could be dangerous. I'm sorry. It disheartens me very much not to support a local business. I own a small business, I know his struggles, and it disheartens me very much. I know he's trying to do the right thing, but this is not the place for it. I just don't support it due to the residential effect as well. I mean, it's different, I know what you're thinking, your client, you know, we approved one a quarter mile down the street, and that's true, but that's entirely different animal. These signs, in my opinion, are a case-by-case basis, there's two lanes either way right in front of that automobile dealership. There's no residential to speak of, it's a whole different animal altogether, in my opinion. But, Mr. Chairman, what, I don't know, I turn to you, I don't know if this is an option for us as a compromise to the petitioner, can we give him the option of withdrawing without prejudice until Rachel's department, and they're working very diligently on revamping the signage restrictions, until those come out in a few months from now? So I just don't want him to be restricted for two years. If there's a chance to help him, I'd like to do it, is my thoughts.
Well, we haven't taken a vote yet, so if at some point the petitioner petitions us to request a withdrawal, we'll take a vote on that, and he needs, he needs to get the proper amount of votes for that to pass, so...
I understand, I'm only one vote, I understand, okay.
All right, Rick?
To you, Mr. Chairman. I kind of agree, we have a situation out there where the traffic merges. We're trying to work with the petitioner, and we want to help a small business like Mr. Belanger said. Is there any chance, like Corey has just, Mr. Belanger's just thrown out there, would you like to withdraw without prejudice? Let us see the Jeep sign, and let us work with, you know, DPD, and we can help, Mr. Hogan. I mean, that's what we're looking to do, we're not looking to hurt him, but I think if that Jeep sign was up, we could get a better feel of what we're looking at out there. And again, we're not trying to be unfair to Mr. Hogan, we're trying to help him, and it would also give DPD, you know, and maybe even neighbors would come out and support it, or not support it, but we could have a good idea of what we have out there. It's a good idea, I think it would help his business, but at this point in time, I would not be in favor of it for those reasons. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Rick. Anything else, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, if I'd like to address a couple issues. I understand the concern with neighbors to that property, but the fact of the matter is these are neighbors whose houses are in commercial zones. We're not trying to put this sign in a residential neighborhood. We're putting the sign on, in a part of town that has these types of signs, that has these types of businesses. We're not going outside the box, so to speak, to install this type of sign. With regards to the pixelation and the glow of the sign that we talked about earlier, by shutting the sign off at 8:00 PM, basically nine months out of the year, the sign isn't even going to be lit when it's dark, so you're not going to have that glow. Daytime glow is minimal compared to everything else that's going on around it. You know, the pixelation that I believe Ms. Kisker was talking about had to do with some of the other signs in that area, the banks, they do have big pixels. This is a 20-millimeter board, which means that the actual dots of light are 20 millimeters apart, they're very, very close. The monochrome units, which are at the two banks, and even the insurance company up the street, those are, those are a lot bigger pixel spacing, if you will. Those are probably 30 to 40 millimeters apart, just guessing typically those kind of units. And again, they're operating those well out of the realm of what we're proposing this Our concern is if we go to a vote tonight, or even if we withdraw tonight, what are some of his other options to get specials out there? What are some of his other options? And that, you start talking about banners, you start talking about that kind of stuff, you know, and I think we can all agree that that doesn't make a property look nice. He's got a nice property there, he's got nice landscaping, he's got an attractive sign that he's maintained, and that's all he's trying to do, is just maintain it based on this technology. That being said, if the board still feels that we wouldn't receive a favorable vote this evening, we would like to withdraw without prejudice, and hopefully something will come around with the other sign. Now, would it be possible to, well, I mean, I'm just thinking, I know that other sign's going to be up within a month. I'd hate to withdraw without prejudice, have the board see the sign and say, "We love it," and then have us have to go through the whole application process again. Is there a way to continue until that other sign is up? Is that something that could happen? Is that something the board would entertain? Then when it comes up, we'll come back, the board can say, "We love it, I think it would work." Just trying to think, you know, some of the other options here.
Oh, Mr. Sullivan, I think you're still looking at months down the road either way. I see your options, but I think either way, you're looking at months. Rachel, if you don't mind, how is planning development coming along with the new guidelines at this point?
We've been working on them, as busy as everybody is, and they're coming along. However, we may even be moving towards, you know, presenting you folks with a draft copy that might even be more restrictive in nature, so I don't think necessarily, you know, waiting, and we can talk about this, you know, in the future. I don't know if it will behoove him to wait, I mean, it certainly makes sense in that it's, you know, it's pending, so perhaps, as you've said, to be out of it for two years is too much, given that something's going to hap, something's going to change, so he should at le, they should at least be able to see the changes. And yes, we're working on them, you know, we hope to have something this summer, summer's here all of a sudden, so we're working hard, but that's our goal.
Okay, great, thank you. And, Mr. Sullivan, I know you have a job to do, and you're doing it well, but my recollection, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we did this Jeep petition down the street, it was presented to us as though that was going to be kind of like a test pilot, you were going to, the technology was new, you'd worked with Rachel, you'd kind of, that was a different area, because clearly that did meet the requirements of a variance. I think, and I'm not sure, but I think we did even put a review date on where your petitioner, in that case, took the risk that if it didn't work, he was going to have to take that down if it wasn't like we thought. So that's still kind of a probationary issue.
Sure.
So I think, you know, you can't ask the board how they're going to vote and then say, "Well, if you're going to vote like that, we're going to get..." But I think that you can read the writing on the wall, that we haven't seen that sign yet. That sign's very much a test pilot, and I think we made it clear that even if that sign is something that we're willing to live with, that is not going to be something that we're going to, you know, base signs on the rest of that street. In fact, I think we were clear at that meeting that we didn't want the street to be one of these reader board, electronic changeable reader board streets, and I thought that you had agreed with us that that, you know... readable streets, and I thought that you had agreed with us that that, you know, by approving that, that wasn't going to happen. I'm not putting words in your mouth, but I'm just going off my memory, I'm not looking at any notes, because I don't have any, but that's my recollection, so I think you heard the comments of the board, so you can do the math, but as far as a continuance, I think this board has to take some action, or no action will be granted in approval, so I want to caution you that if we do, if you do request a continuance, that it's only going to be for a certain amount of time, and that you're going to be very clear in the record that this is not going to be used against this board as taking no action thereby silently approving your petition. I don't think you'd do that, but I want to make it clear, because we are under some statutory guidelines. And I don't know that waiting a month, or regardless of how the Jeep sign turns out, is going to change my vote, I just think that it's two different animals, it's two different locations, two different directions, two different sides of the street, and one doesn't mean the other one should be approved, in fact, that, you know, you can make the reverse argument, so I don't know that waiting's going to change my vote at all, but I'm willing to give you the benefit of the doubt. I think everybody knows that Hogan Tire does a reputable business, and you heard the board, nobody's, you know, trying to stop that, and, or anyway, you know, harm his business. We understand this competition in Tuxbury and these bigger companies, but that's in every business, there's nothing we can do about that. If we use that as a criteria, then basically the bigger, flashier sign wins, and everybody would be right before us, including, you know, his competitors that may be down the street or coming down the street, so I guess that's just my feeling for what it's worth, and you can request whatever you'd like to the board, and the board will take a vote, but what would you like to do?
We'd like to withdraw without prejudice this evening, and we'll revisit it after the Jeep sign is up, and...
Okay, and I think you understand that means reapply?
Yes, yes.
Readvertise, okay. So, there's a, the petitioner's requesting to withdraw, and we need a roll call?
Yes, so you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, we need a motion to allow...
With that being said, I'll make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second motion.
Okay, motion to allow the withdrawal has been made, with a second, Kim, roll call?
Allow the withdrawal.
Withdraw.
Allow the withdrawal.
Allow the withdrawal.
Allow to withdraw.
Okay, so withdrawal has been allowed unanimously, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next order of business is ZB 2010-000014, it's a request for a variance, Doreen A. Jones, 89 Wallaston Street, this is in a single suburban, single-family district, to raise the existing structure and construct a new single-family on an undersized lot without the required frontage, and with insufficient front yard setback to the garage pursuant to Article 5, Section 5.1 of the dimensional code. Oh, so, we're going to take that one out of order, so we are going to take this one. Are you here for...
Doreen Jones.
Okay, we're going to take this out of order, so the next one, the reason is I have to recuse myself from the next petition, so we will take this one. Okay, Mr. Barry?
Yep, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Brian Barry, my law office is at 671 Rogers Street in Lowell, I'm here on behalf of Doreen Jones, the petitioner for three variances at 89 Wallaston Street. The current condition of the property, I'm sure you've been by there, it is a single-family house located on a lot, it's 8,097 square feet, the lot has 70 feet of frontage, and what Mrs. Jones proposes to do is to build a new four-bedroom, a four-bedroom house with a two-car garage on the lot. The house was previously owned by Mrs. Jones's mother, who passed away last year, Mrs. Jones presently owns the house with her daughter Danielle, and the plan on Danielle moving in there. The variances requested are three-dimensional variances, the first one is for the lot size, under the present zoning, that calls for a 10,000-square-foot lot, this lot is 8,097 square feet. It's currently existing, it was not created by the petitioner, and she's in no position to add 2,000 feet. Similarly, there's a request for a variance from the frontage requirement of 75 feet, again, the lot has 70 feet of frontage, again, a current condition, not something that was created by the petitioner. And the last request for a variance is from the setback requirement for the garage, the zoning code calls for a 30-foot setback requirement, she's requesting the board vary that to 25 feet. The purpose of that is, we think it fits better on the lot, if you, if you go out there now, actually the house that's on the lot now, this setback would be probably four or five feet back from where the house is from the street presently. Also, we think it would line up with the houses on either side of Mrs. Jones's house, if you allowed this setback rather than the 30 feet. And finally, it creates space in the backyard for children. So, based on all of that, we'd ask, we feel that this is an improvement to the property, an improvement to the neighborhood, we'd ask that the board find that because of the shape of the existing lot, the size of the existing lot, and the frontage on the existing lot, which had been long since established, that enforcement of the zoning bylaw would create a substantial hardship on Mrs. Jones. Also, I forgot to mention, the present house has a large termite problem, and that's one of the reasons that they were looking to raise it and build this new house.
So, you think regardless, they're going to have to probably raise that house anyway? Probably take it down?
Well, no, not beyond rehab, but it would be preferential to take it down, for sure.
Do you know if Mrs. Jones, or anybody in the family, has discussed this with any abutters?
Yes, they have discussed it with the abutters, people on either side have no objection, one of the abutters is here to speak in favor if necessary.
Okay, now, these plans, Attorney Barry, these are exact plans as to what will be built there, or is this...
Those are the exact plans.
Okay, and they've, have they discussed this with a builder, do you know?
They've had a couple of people look at it, they don't have a contract with a builder at this point, obviously, that would be pending...
Right.
Hopefully, the approval of the variances.
Right. Just as a question, sometimes when plans are presented, and it looks good on paper, and then they bring it to a builder, and they realize that the plans they have are cost prohibitive, and then they're forced to build this house, because it's, be careful what you ask, be careful when you get approved, and then they kind of have to build this or nothing, so as long as they're prepared, if it's approved, if they're prepared to build basically this house?
Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Jones about that tonight, and he's confident that this is the house, he will be able to build it.
Okay. And how many square feet is it altogether, the proposed...
I believe it's 2,400.
2,400. And that's two and a half stories, is it?
Uh, yes.
Is that a two-car garage, or a one-car garage?
That's a two-car garage.
Okay. I like the design, and, you know, I went by the neighborhood, and clearly, this house would be an absolute improvement to that area, and the requests are minimal, and it is a tough lot that was pre-existing. I guess my concern is with the driveway, I mean, with the garage coming out, the 25 feet, I didn't think to look at where the garage would be, but you're saying that that would be pretty mu, it's not going to, in other words, it's not going to stick out like a bucktooth from the rest of the street, right?
No, no, actually, it would be setback further than when the, if, I think it's shown on the plan, the Board of Appeal plan, it would, the existing house is shown there, and the garage is actually set back maybe four or five feet back from where the house is today, so it's about, you know that little addition on the side?
Yes.
I would think would be about parallel to that.
Okay. Okay. Okay, any, Bill, do you have any questions for Attorney Barry?
And Mrs. Jones is here as well, if there's any questions.
While he's up there, I just wanted to know if anybody wanted to ask any questions.
Yeah. Well, you hit, through you, Mr. Chairman, you hit on basically everything I wanted to ask. Landscape plan at all?
No, he doesn't have a landscape plan, at this point.
Okay, well, is that, Mr. Chairman?
Something you work with.
Do we want that submitted with the application?
Yeah, a lot of times, we've been doing that after, but yes, it's definitely, if the plan is approved, we would require some landscape plan, probably, you would not have to come back, but you'd have to submit it to the planning department for approval, somebody in there, but...
I don't recall seeing, are there really any trees on that property, if you're facing the house maybe on the right-hand side, but I was just curious if any tree's going to be taken down, or...
This is Mr. Jones.
My name's David Jones. There is really no trees on the property right now.
Yeah, I don't remember.
On the right-hand side of the driveway, that will remain there also, and we will be putting shrubs and, you know...
Any new fence, any new fencing, or anything like that?
No, not any fencing right now, no.
Okay.
And what Brian was saying about the garage, the garage is in the house, basically, it follows the line, it doesn't stick out, it doesn't protrude any further out into the property, that basically the garage line is a 25-foot line going back from there.
Yeah, so if you have two-car garage, plus I assume you could probably get two cars in the driveway, too, you have up to four cars, you could park if you had to.
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yes, I do. Attorney Barry, the existing home, how many bedrooms is in it?
Two bedrooms, two small bedrooms, yes.
Two bedrooms.
The proposed, probably, this proposed house, how many bedrooms going to be?
Four bedrooms.
You indicated to the chairman that it's going to be two-car garage?
Two-car garage, yes. And that's attached to the building.
Was that the only reason for this, the demolition or removal of the existing home is because of the termite?
It's very termite-ridden, yes, we have pictures, we had a home inspector come in and he...
You mean the city inspector, when they...
No, we had a private inspector, a house check, come in and inspect the termites, and the casings around the windows, I mean, it's extensive damage in the house through the termites.
I do, just a little comment, I do concur with the chairman, that the request tonight is, appeared to be minimal, and I think, looking at the property, been there, and also seeing the plan, is that the changes, I feel at least is improving the neighborhood than the existing home, so I'm prepared to vote for this tonight, thank you.
Thank you, we do, too.
Yeah, we, well, I've been in the neighborhood for 47 years, and plan on staying there, my daughter's hoping to move in and do the same, we're very happy with the city of Lowell, and we've been here a long time, and no, the school system, my kids have gone through the system, and we're very happy with the city of Lowell.
Thank you, thank you. Corey?
Yes, so you, Mr. Chairman, I think Mrs. Jones just answered my question, though, actually. Now, Mr. Jones, you reside on Russell Street, correct?
Yes, at the very end.
Okay, and you intend on staying there, and your daughter and her family are going to move in this new home, you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to know, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rick, anything?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition, in favor, and hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed? Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition, in opposition to this petition, and hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed? And what is the wish of the board?
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, Kim? Approve, but I want to amend the motion to...
Landscape?
Landscape condition, that the homeowner submitted acceptable landscape plan to the planning and development landscape designer.
I'd be happy to amend the motion, Mr. Chairman, that the petitioner submitted the, you know, appropriate landscape to the DPD plan designers. Thank you, sir.
Okay, second?
I'll second the motion.
And roll call again, Kim?
Approve with conditions.
Approve with condition?
Approve with condition.
Approve with conditions.
Approve with conditions.
Okay, so you've been unanimously approved, I just need Attorney Barry to come up here and sign a couple of documents and give them to Kim, appreciate it. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the next petition is ZB 2010-000013, this is a request for a variance Einstein and Lanthago, 40 through 43 Floyd Street, to convert a single-family to a two-family without the required lot area per dwelling unit pursuant to Article 5, Section 5.1. Would a representative please approach the podium? And just for the record and disclosure, I have a conflict of interest with this proposal, so, gentlemen, I'm going to have to recuse myself, and that leaves four voting members, and the way the board works is, you need all four votes unanimously, so if one person denies you, then it's fatal to your petition, so you have an option at this point, you can request a continuance till there's a full board, and you have more members that will be voting, or you can go forward, and with the hopes of getting the four remaining members to vote unanimously to support your petition. If you'd like a continuance, the board generally grants those in conditions like this, it's just that we have one member missing tonight, and I have to recuse myself due to a conflict of interest in this petition. So, having said that, I'm just going to turn it over to the Vice Chairman, Vesna Noon, and he can take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir, I'm sorry. You heard the chairman, what is your wish? Because you need all four vote, if one of us has voted to deny it, then your petition is failed, so it's up to you. If you wait for the next two weeks, I believe, the next meeting, that the other member will be here, then you have five vote, you have five members, and you all, all you need is four vote, so it's up to you, you have an option. Talk to him, yes, sir. Yes, do that. Okay, the owner would like to wait for another two weeks for the full board, I... So you asked for continuing on this matter, so that we have a full board. When's the next hearing, the chief?
And I think that would be three weeks from tonight, Madam Secretary. It's one of those real much ways of three weeks.
June 14, right, June 14?
Yeah.
You want to wait for Rick to get here? Okay, just wait a minute for the other member to come in, and then we, I will entertain the motions to continue. Rick's is here. Well, what's the wish of the board? The request is for continue, so we can have a full board. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, that's my opinion, but if the petitioner wishes to continue, I would certainly support him.
Is that in a formal motion, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, okay, with that being said, no input from my colleagues, so I'll make a motion to continue till June 14, 2010.
Second motion.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Belanger?
Continue.
Mr. Gagnon?
Continue.
Continue to June 14.
So, your request has been granted, if you could come up here and sign the paper, and this matter continue to June 14. Those of you in the audience who would like to speak on this matter, please come back on June 14, because it's the petitioner's right to have a full board, so he requests that. The next meeting will be June 14. Please come back if you'd like to speak in favor or in opposition of this petition. Please come back if you'd like to speak in favor or in opposition of this petition.
Yep, you will not be notified by mail, so that's three weeks from tonight.
Thank you for being here. Next petition, Mr. Chairman, sir?
Yep, that's it, okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I believe the next two items, the final two items on the agenda, can be taken together, and the petitioner can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's basically the same parcel, and that would be ZB 2010-000015 and 2010-000016, both looking for variance, both Kay William Krikorian. The first one is 96 Alma Street in a traditional single-family district, and the second one is variance on 87 Lafayette Street, and both would like to construct a single-family home that exceeds the maximum allowed structure height and number of stories within the 100-year floodplain pursuant to Section 5.1 and 9.1.14 of the zone ordinance. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, I am the petitioner, Kay William Krikorian. I'm here before the board to get a positive approval on three variances on both lots. The situation is, they are two separate lots, separated by a single-family home between the two lots. The construction and site issues at hand are nearly identical, and we had presented a plan before the City of Lowell Conservation Commission several weeks back. The Conservation Commission approved the order of conditions and issued the order of conditions for us to build a single-family home with certain limitations on each of the lots. Subsequent to the Conservation Commission issuing the order of conditions, DEP issued an appeal and basically, essentially voided the order of conditions. We had a meeting with Nancy White from DEP at the site a couple of weeks ago, and the concerns are that DEP has issued new guidelines regarding compensatory storage, underground storage of water on floodplain house lots, and both of these lots had compensatory storage underground to retain water. So as a result of the change, we had a meeting with DEP at the site, and unofficially, from my understanding is, is they would approve the lots to be built upon, provided that the houses be built on piers or columns. That would mean that as the plan was originally introduced to CONCOM, the house will be approximately seven feet above finished grade, and there would have been a two-car garage under with a full foundation. In this particular circumstance, with DEP's input and denial of our appeal to the original order of conditions, we're going to have to build these houses on piers, which creates a couple of problems. Number one, aesthetically, you know, you have to have a full flow-through design, you know, on the ground, nothing restricting the flow of water whatsoever, therefore, the design with the columns. And number two, the fact that CONCOM and DEP is forcing us to raise these houses seven feet above finished grade, basically, in order to put a two-story house on that lot would put us above the zoning regulations regarding height and floor, the number of floors that we could have. So the reason I'm here this evening is to get the board's approval on three issues. The first one, to be able to build in a floodplain. The second issue, allowing us to build two-and-a-half stories as a result of having to raise the houses seven feet above finished grade. And the third variance would be exceeding the 32-foot height level. So A and B kind of fall in line together, a chicken-and-egg situation, I guess, and C would be to build within a 100-year floodplain. In essence, that's everything in a nutshell. I'd be glad to answer any questions the board may have regarding these two lots.
I guess my only question is, this was before this board several years ago, or was it a few years ago? I'm not sure when.
About two years ago, Mr. Chairman.
Something, okay.
And I believe they came back for an extension, which also expired, if my recollection is correct.
Right, but what you originally got approved for is no longer what you can build, right?
What CONCOM approved was the, what we did is, we eliminated, the original plan that was approved involved a two-car detached garage, and our plan was to eliminate the garage, which we did, and just build a 28-by-36-foot print two-story home on that lot with a two-car garage under with a full foundation. And in that plan, as I said previously, we had to put compensatory storage tanks in the ground, and CONCOM approved the entire concept and issued the order of conditions, and about a week later, DEP appealed that decision, and now we're saying that we can't put the tanks in the ground, we can still build the house, but we have to build it on columns, so...
And that brings you here.
And that brings us here. So in essence, I guess the bottom line would be, any approval that you would give us would be subject to the approval of DEP, approving our plan, our revised plan.
So I'm clear now, because what you approved with before, you can no longer build, so...
Correct, correct.
This is not one of the situations where you had approvals, it expired, and now you just couldn't do it for economic reasons, and now you're back just seeking to get them reinstated, it's a whole different, it's a whole different house.
No, it's the same house, the only thing that's been eliminated is the full foundation.
And you added pillars?
Pardon?
You added pillars?
We're adding pillars instead of the foundation.
So aesthetically, it's a whole different house?
Aesthetically, it'll be a different house, instead of, as I said previously, instead of seeing concrete walls around the perimeter of the house, you're going to see columns, which would be totally, around the perimeter of the house, or three sides at least, would be lattice work, and shrubbery, bushes, and things of that nature, and that conceptually is what DEP is agreeing to approve. So what happened is, we ended up in a situation that we had the approval from CONCOM, and that's when we applied to have the hearing with the zoning board to get your approval, and in that interim period of time is when DEP came in with its appeal. So it, you know, it became a timing situation. So verbally, what they're saying to us is, if you're willing to build a house on columns and submit a plan for our approval, we'll go along with that. So although I don't have anything in writing, I have it verbally, and as I said, what I would be in agreement too, is if the board elected to approve my requests, it would be acceptable to me to have it subject to the approval of DEP, conditional approval would be acceptable to me.
Okay, all right, you maybe have to answer some other questions, but we're, I sense that we don't have any petitions left, and there's a lot of folks here, they're probably here for your petition, so...
Okay.
Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In favor of this petition, hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? Anybody in opposition, sir, in the back? Please state your name and address for the record before you speak.
Yes, my name is Donald O'Hearn, and I live at 102 New York Street, which is in the same area. I've been active in the flood committee and before city council several times, regarding this area and trying to get something done with regard to Beaver Brook and the flooding that takes place in the spring, May, and March, April, or April and May. And I thought there was going to be some kind of moratorium on building in an area floodplain like this, I mean, we have enough problems already, we had two events this past year of water, you know, coming up through the back, towards the back of my house, I have two people here that live in flow-throughs, Mr. Ron, Ron here, who lives in a flow-through, and is not really glad to have the water flowing through his house. I think it was sold to him under the idea that, eh, it's only floods every 100 years, but since 2006, we had two major floods, one in '06 and one in '07, which was quite devastating to myself and also my neighbors, Deborah and also Paul Belair, and also Sharon and Ms. Paz as well, you know? And we're not anxious to see anybody else building that, because it does affect the water table when people building. A concrete basement, I mean, before the three flow-throughs that were built there, were put there, the land absorbed more water, but now with the, between the driveways and the pad itself that the house sits on, regardless of it's flowing through, it doesn't seem to absorb as much water, you know, and plus the petitioner looks for variances as far as the height is concerned, I don't think anybody wants to see a house that's higher than theirs, if it's in their front window that blocks the sun and so on and so forth, because I've had somebody mention to me that that's exactly what's going to happen to them, you know, that that house is going to be, you know, taking away a lot of, it's going to be just like a big billboard in front of your house or something like that, the height restriction and stuff in the neighborhood. But my most, I'm mainly concerned with the fact that we're trying to get something built up with a levee and so on and so forth, the Army Corps of Engineers, and nothing's been done along those lines, so before anything like that would be done, we're getting threatened more with more flooding, I'd like to see something regarding that levee and an I-beam wall, like they have on the Centerville side of Beaver Brook, done to the western side, or, you know, the Pawtucketville side of that brook, because we're not, we're very nervous every April and May, you know, when it starts raining, the snow starts melting, and that water in the brook starts coming up, you know, and...
Did you have any trouble this last...
Yes, I had a lot of trouble with the city, as a matter of fact, they tried to put a dam right down the middle of my street. The unfortunate part is that I'm on the other side of the dam, on the part where the water is, and it's very upsetting. I think my wife almost got into altercation with Mr. McCarthy, you know, over that, you know, they tried to put dirt, earth and dam down the middle of the street, and my wife wasn't having any of it, and she pulled her car out, her mother's car, not to allow him to do that, you know? We are adamant about not being, having anything being done, you know? If this is the best they can do, it's the best, as my mother-in-law says, is not too good, you know, we're not that happy about that, and we're not happy to have the density of the community, you know, more houses put in an area like this, you know, that we're already fighting flood conditions there, you know? All we need is some more people in there to do it. We objected to the flow-throughs that were built before, and they went through because they were flow-throughs and so on and so forth, not going to bother you. Well, it doesn't really bother me, but I know this gentleman doesn't like to come home and, you know, see his car underneath water in his garage, you know, because that's what a flow-through amounts to, you know? The water does flow right through his house. Not a comfortable thing, in spite of the fact that that's what it is, you know? And that's my objection to this.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, hi, my name is Paul Belair, 65 Alma Street, Rosemont Terrace Neighborhood Group. I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things that Mr. O'Hearn mentioned, but I also would like to say that many of the neighbors who are here this evening, we know the folks who own that property, they're very good people. The plans that we saw for the original home, we felt at the time would conform to the neighborhood, it was just a small two-family home with a foundation, and, I mean, there hasn't been a moratorium except for the last, this year we had two near events, so I'm going to echo what Mr. O'Hearn said about the flooding issues. But this home being built on pillars, you see that kind of thing along the beach, because of the code, the buildings, those homes do not belong in this neighborhood. We have two-family homes, we have single-family homes, and on Donald O'Hearn's side, we have the flow-throughs. This type of home would not conform to the neighborhood, so I don't want to speak for the butters, but we did discuss this, and we will be in opposition to this type of home being built on pillars in our neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? In the back, you've been waiting, and ma'am, you're next. Please state your name and address, ma'am, for the record.
Hi, Deborah Murphy Luna, 86 New York Street.
Hi.
Hi, I have to agree with them also, I live next door to the homes that were built, they were built probably a couple of years after I bought my home, and however, I don't feel that the flow-through has helped me in any way, in fact, I think it maybe added more stress to the water to come into my home without having any land to absorb it. However, a main concern I have is, I have to agree with Paul, as far as putting the houses up, if I wanted to sell my home right now, I couldn't, I don't even think I could give my home away at this point, and to have homes in the neighborhood that are up on stilts that look like Salisbury and Hampton Beach, and then I have to disclose to sell my home that it's a flood area, no one's going to be interested in buying in that neighborhood. At the last city council's meeting regarding the flooding, we were told by the city council that we were, they were trying to do whatever they could to help us out as far as the flooding, and at one point, the conversation was, why were those homes that exist there now even allowed to be built there if it's a floodplain? I had asked the city council if they couldn't come up with anything, if they could take into consideration perhaps buying us out of the neighborhood, and, you know, making parks or whatnot, something that, you know, could actually not be destroyed by water. And there was talk that that had been mentioned at city council meetings, so if it's, we have a huge problem with the flooding, a huge problem with the scare, you know, last month, we had the city of Lowell down there dumping, I mean, my house is still barricaded with sandbags in the back, because I won't take them out until spring's over and I feel safe. To build more homes and not help us try to fix the problem that we have, it's just not making any sense to me, to use more of the land to build homes, and like I said, it's going to drop the rate of the neighborhood and hurt whomever's trying to get out of that neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Sir, you're next, ma'am.
Yes, my name is James Goncalves, I live at 115 Lafayette Street, I've been there over 30 years, I'm just a few houses down from where this gentleman wants to build those houses. I've been trying to get things done around my neighborhood, trying to make things better, nobody seems to be doing anything about the flood situation down there. Now, if this gentleman is allowed to build a house that's going to be over 50 feet high on stilts, he might as well put signs on it saying, "Do not buy any property down here, it's a floodplain, and it's, you know, it's in danger of being flooded." It's a floodplain and it's, you know, it's in danger of being flooded. It's an advertisement not to buy houses." We can't sell, our houses, you know, there's sale signs all over the place there. People don't wanna buy houses there now. These people are gonna come in and build houses on stilts. Where he wants to build houses, there were, the last flood we had a few years ago, about three years ago, there were kids fishing for cops right on his, the property he wants to build. That's how bad the flood was there. That's how high the water line was, right where he wants to build these houses. It's, it's, it's just ridiculous, you know? And, and I'm, I'm opposed to it, and that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you, sir. And ma'am, you're next.
My name's Janet Paz, and I'm the butter for this property, both properties. My house runs Alma and Lafayette straight down. In the beginning, in two thousand and five, early two thousand and six, prior to the flood, this property had been sold tentatively versus zoning and everything. And you guys didn't want to pork chop the lot up, and the gentleman walked away. Approximately three months later, everything was destroyed there. And like Mr. Gonzalez said, they were fishing in that lot. It's the low lot. There's, there's nothing you can do about it. That's where the water's gonna go. My home, five feet of water in the first floor, we were destroyed. After that, someone bought the, the house that's on the lot now, and then there's two empty lots where they wanna build the prop, properties. In the beginning, putting a house there, you know, would look nice. I was for it as long as it was done properly. In March, we sat at a emergency flood meeting where McCarthy said that no home should be put in a flood zone anymore. Just shouldn't be done. We're not helping any, anything by putting other people in danger. So now I hear about stilts, and I didn't even think about Salisbury. I'm thinking Virginia. I'm thinking North Carolina. I'm thinking that's what their houses are built like because of the water. And everyone in here is right. You can't sell your house in that neighborhood. How are you gonna sell two new houses that look like they're gonna be flooded? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition, ma'am?
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if we could get a show of hands in the audience of those who are in opposition? I'm assuming it's everybody, but can we see a show of hands who are in opposition to this project? Okay, great. Thank you.
Deb Forjoni, Townsend Avenue. I live in a floodplain, and I'm here to support the neighbors, especially Donna Hearn. And I just wanted to ask you to please don't set a precedent for increased height in a flood area. That would be number one. And number two, please don't set a precedent for a lot reduction in a flood area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Omen, fifty-eight Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass. I was at the planning board meeting last week when the planning board took a vote on the ZBA notices, and they were opposed to this. This does not fit the neighborhood character according to the master plan of the city or the Pawtucketville master plan, and I urge the board to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition, ma'am?
My name's Sharon Jander. I live at eighty-four Lafayette Street. I'm just gonna agree with everybody else that came up to speak. I mean, this year here, we had water problems. I had water problems. Because in two thousand and six, the people that live right next door to me ripped down their little two-bedroom cape and built a home over there. And ever since they've built that brand-new home, I've had water problems on that side of my house. I've had more water come in every time it rains. And if they're gonna build exactly across the street from me, what's gonna happen to me then?
So this house is directly across from yours?
Right, yeah, right. I can sit right on my front porch and wave to whoever's gonna be living there. You know, if you go around, you look at my foundation, I only have three bricks, cinderblocks. Everybody else is a lot higher than mine's. And every time it rains, my backyard fills up. My husband lost two weeks out of work this year because of the water, and I can't afford it. You know, my house value dropped a big time. I got a house that's brand-new next door, and I have a two-family on the other side of me that hasn't even been touched since two thousand and six, that looks like, I don't wanna say. Okay? And they wanna put a brand-new home there. They should go out and look at some of the houses that are there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Did you say, sir, there was somebody here that had, lives in a house on columns? Does somebody live in one of the flow-throughs that's here?
Yeah. Oh, I do.
Sir, do you wanna, do you mind?
No problem. My name is Ron Vera. I live at seventy-eight New York Street. I live in one of the new flow-throughs.
When you say new, I'm trying to remember which one, how long, this is three or four years ago?
They're five years old.
Five years old, okay.
Right. They were constructed in, what, five years ago? And not knowing that the problems that, you know, ahead of me, which happened, the, the situation was still, even with the flow-through itself, by losing personal property and losing time out of work and losing everything, to me, it wasn't worth it. And now, for what I paid for the place and everything, there's nothing I can do with it anymore. I'm stuck with it, and that's it. As far as doing anything around there, I think instead of putting up more, I think they should be doing something to cure the problem instead of adding to it, you know, to help the people out in that area. Because everything down there now is not worth anything, nothing. You can't do nothing with it, and everybody just looks and laughs. There's one right across the street, been for sale now for probably just about a year, and they haven't had any offers on it, nothing. So as far as the situation is putting up more, that's not gonna help. That's, that's like kicking somebody in the face, actually.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Okay, so that closes the public hearing. We'll open up for the board for consideration. Bill?
Thank you.
And Mr. Kukorian, if you have any questions for him, he's there, available and-
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. To the petitioner, in our packets, you have a page here for project description for each of the two properties, and they're both similar.
I, I didn't hear you, sir.
You have a project description page that's in our packet.
I believe so.
Yep. And in reading through this, I noticed you have a section here that talks about being in the floodplain zone and the Conservation Commission work you'd have to have done. You have a sentence here that says, "Special construction methods will be used on site to minimize and mitigate floodwater impacts to the site and the neighborhood in general." Could you just briefly explain to me what those methods are and what type of cost impact that would have to you?
Well, since we had the meeting with DEP and, and essentially received the ultimatum from DEP that the house had to be built on columns, we've done a significant amount of research regarding how to build this house with a minimal amount of negative impact on the neighborhood and, in particular, the two lots involved. Our plan at this time, subject to getting all the necessary approvals, would be to put in a, instead of going in and digging holes and trenches to build these columns, we're gonna put in screw columns, the helical coil screw columns. And at the point of each particular column, backhoe has an auger, a drive auger on it, and these screws will be driven right into the ground without disturbing any of the surrounding soils. And the screws go down to a depth that's predetermined by a geological engineer. And then the screws are encased in concrete to a diameter generally about ten inches in diameter. So the impact on the neighborhood and on the particular lots at hand are gonna be minimal in the amount of, there'll be very little evasive destruction done to the lots. So we feel as though environmentally, the, the way we've elected to go forward is a sound approach to installing the columns on the lots. The other, the other point I wanted to make is that with these columns and the fact that we're gonna have the lattice work around three sides and the shrubbery around it as well, these houses are gonna look fairly normal as a traditional home. They're not gonna be up there on sticks or stilts, some of the words I heard this evening. These are gonna, we're gonna make every effort possible to make them look traditional because it's important for the neighborhood, and it's also important to make the house sellable. And one of the things that we wanna do is we wanna make the homes affordable because in order to be able to sell them, we have to put them at a price point that's gonna make them attractive. So when the design change and everything that's come into play, you know, we're talking about these homes selling in the price range of two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars. Two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars makes the house competitive to buying a condominium. So when you really think about two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars for new construction today, it makes, it makes it a highly affordable home for first-time home buyer. And that's, that's the, that's the home buyer market that we're targeting for these two particular lots. So, and the other issue, and I, and I heard it, and it's a legitimate one that everybody had here this evening, is the height issue, okay? You know, I agree that thirty-eight feet or thirty-seven feet or thirty-nine or forty feet is very high. I've given this quite a bit of thought, and one of the things that I would like to do tonight, if it's, if it's acceptable to the board, would be to change this from a two-and-a-half story house to a one-and-a-half sto, I'm sorry, from a three-and-a-half story house to a two-and-a-half story house and come in underneath the thirty-two-foot height level. So the only requirement that I think that we really need to get here this evening is I'll make a concession to reduce the, the height of the houses, eliminate one story, bring it down to conform with the zoning bylaws in the city of Lowell, and request a variance to build in a floodplain. I mean, I understand the concerns of the people in the community, and, and I, I'll do what I can do to work with them to make this project work. And I'd be glad to answer any questions the board would have regarding these issues.
So can you tell me how many past construction projects you've done this type of construction with?
Well, since I've been a builder, I've built over thirty single-family homes.
Yep.
I've never built one in a floodplain. The construction is basically the same, you know, whether you build a house on a hill or in a valley or in a floodplain or on a flat piece of land.
Have you built, have you built in the city of Lowell in a floodplain?
No, I have not. As I said previously, I've never built in a floodplain. I'm a qualified builder. I've been building homes for quite a few years, and I do a very good job in doing what I do.
So you're not anticipating any added expense in building these homes that you would normally, wouldn't occur if you were building a regu, regular residential lot?
No, I don't. You know, in, in reality, what we proposed to the Conservation Commission was to build the homes, there's a new wall construction for foundations. It's called superior wall design. And, and it's a prefabricated foundation system that's modular in construction and is approximately two inches thick. And the foundation walls sit on crushed stone, compacted crushed stone, so there are no footings. And the modular company that builds these foundations comes in, drops them on the, on the crushed stone, bolts them together and seals them, and it makes them watertight. And this was the plan originally to build this house, which was approved by the Lowell Conservation Commission. That foundation plan is quite expensive. It's, it's traditionally about fifteen percent, twenty percent more in cost than a conventional foundation. So in reality, when you're looking at what we proposed originally by putting in the superior wall design and now putting in the helical coil pilings, it pretty much comes out about the same in price. If anything, the, the helical coil design will be a few dollars less than the superior wall design and go much quicker.
Are you proposing to do anything special since these are corner lots as far as water runoff?
I believe the engineering company who did the original engineering for the plan did stormwater management on the lot. And the other issue that we did is we intended to put in a dry well to capture the runoff from the roof and the gutter system, which, you know, we would still do if DEP allowed it. And, you know, that's pretty much it. We're not gonna make the runoff any worse than it is right now. The intent would be to manage the, the rain or stormwater runoff to a point equal to or better than what we have now. Our civil engineer would, would provide that engineering. I'm sure it would be requested by DEP. So this kinda goes back to what I said a little earlier in my presentation, that hopefully if we were able to obtain a positive vote from the board and get approval to build, having it subject to DEP approvals would be acceptable to me. And I'm sure the DEP would not allow us to do anything that would be detrimental to the community in any shape, way, or form, nor would I do anything that would be detrimental to the community.
So has DE, yeah, DEP seen these plans that you presented to us?
Yes, they have. They fully reviewed them.
Yeah. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Vesna?
I don't really have questions, Mr. Chairman, but I do have some comments on this, is the fact that the neighbors spoke all in opposition of this and the fact that they leave from, this is from experience, especially the gentleman that purchased a home, a five-year-old flow-through, and experienced a flood. And I'm not convinced that the petitioners is going to minimize the effects that the water would have on these areas, and especially when he has no experience in building on a floodplain.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Vesna. And, you know, listening to the neighbors and being out there and seeing the area, sir, and seeing the proposed house that you build, I, I think that even the lowest threshold that you meet, you know, not having a detriment to the neighborhood, I think it's very hard to make the case that you don't. I know you have the land there, and I know that it was previously approved, and I think some of the neighbors even suggested that they supported that, what it was going to be. And where you're talking about substantially revising your plans and putting this house on columns, if you wanna call them columns, and even with the lattice work, and that naturally requires a variance for the height. So it's gonna have a disproportionate perception as to the, you know, the rooftops of the houses, and I think that in and of itself is enough for me to not support this project. But beyond that, there are several other things that, you know, I don't even need to go into for my reasons for not wanting to support it, but mostly it's the detriment that will have to the neighborhood and the impact that it may have to these surrounding homes as far as flooding. I mean, these folks do not appear to be here just to stop development. I think they're here for a reason. They've been struggling with this for many years and probably, and probably for many years to come. And I, I think in good faith, they're just telling us exactly what their experiences are over there, and I believe them. I mean, you've seen it in the paper, and I think when we all read it, we just say, "Thank God, it's not us." So, you know, I don't think that that's, this is something that I, in any conscious way, I could support.
Corey?
Yes, to you, Mr. Chairman. I do share your concerns on this petition as well. There are several issues, concerns I do have, especially with A1 is, is the flooding issue with that neighborhood. These residents have been through the wringer, so to speak, with flood. I mean, their values have plummeted. So, I mean, I'm not too concerned that, you know, you wanna build houses and make money. I mean, I don't see that viable option either. That risk lies with you, about getting two-hundred, some odd thousand. It seems a lot in the realm to me, but again, that risk lies with- It seems a lot in the realm to me, but again, that risk lies with you, not the city and certainly not the residents. But the flood issue, you did dawn on the subject and I do appreciate the research you're doing. I find that to be very thorough. But you've contradicted yourself. You said the impact will be very minimal at one point and then you said it'll be no impact. I need strong evidence that there's no impact whatsoever and I don't see that here in your proposal. These residents can't afford any more stress on their situation. They really can't. They've been through enough. They are stuck there for God knows how long. I hope it gets better for them and I empathize with them. But that's A1, my issue, as my colleagues share. And just the height, you know, being on stilts, now you're talking the height, you're losing literally one story. So you've got to go up 10 feet before you can build and it, just the height is going to stick out like a sore thumb. So there are a few issues here that the chairman echoed that I must agree with and I'm not in support of this petition. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Corey. And Rick, anything?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with everybody. To allow you to build in a 100-year floodplain down there, I'd be beside myself. I know the neighbors are having troubles down there. I deal with floods in the town I work for. I just want to ask Paul. Paul, we have nothing over there yet? Nothing from FEMA for you guys? Nothing has come about over there, Paul? I mean, I know you have that empty duplex down there still. I mean, in all due respects, sir, I'd hate to see two brand-new houses sitting there for years for $229 and these poor people have to look at them. I've dealt with the construction you're talking about, but to put these neighbors through more empty homes possibly down there, I mean, it's devastating. It's devastating. I was over there during the original floods of Mother's Day. It's devastating. I mean, I just want to ask you, Paul, nothing from FEMA, nothing from MIA or anybody?
What we, we had a study done by the Army Corps of Engineers and right now, we're waiting for funding for a hydrological study to study the environmental impact of possibly putting a permanent I-WALL on the Beaver Brook side. That with our petition governor, the, I'm drawing a blank here, Kerry's office and Senator Brown's office. We've also been working closely with the city on the Flood Task Force and the neighborhoods with the Flood Owners Group. So we've been, you know, keep picking at them to make sure that they keep us in mind whenever any funding is available. But right now, the only thing we're doing is we just found out that the Army Corps of Engineers is going to be shoring up the wall on the Centreville side. And that kind of perturbed us in the neighborhood, knowing that they're going to be putting some money on that side when all we have is an earthen berm to protect us from the mermax. So we're continuing to work on, try to resolve our flooding issues. So that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
That's our only question to add, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, and what is the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second motion.
Roll call. Actually, just to clarify, we're going to have to take these in order. So if you could restate the motion, this is for the variance at 96 Alma Street will The motion to approve was made by Mr. Belanger, seconded by Mr. Noon, I believe. I'm sorry, Mr. Bailey, I believe. Deny.
Mr. Bailey?
Deny.
Mr. Bailey?
Deny.
Mr. Belanger?
Deny.
Mr. Bailey?
Deny.
Mr. Bailey?
Deny. Sir, the petition regarding 96 Alma Street has been unanimously denied. The, now we'll take up the petition, 2010-00016. This is Kay William Kocorian, 87 Lafayette Street. The same arguments were made for that, sir, unless you want to restate everything. Is there anything you'd like to add regarding Lafayette Street?
No, they're basically, essentially the same.
Okay. So what is the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve, 87 Lafayette Street.
Second motion.
And I need a roll call.
Mr. Bailey?
Deny.
Mr. Bailey?
Deny.
Mr. Bailey?
Deny.
Mr. Bailey?
Deny.
Mr. Bailey?
Deny. And sir, that petition has been unanimously denied. Thank you for your time. Thank you, folks, for coming.
Thank you.
Good evening. And thanks to the neighborhood for coming out. Thank you very much.
Okay, we have, I think, acceptance of minutes? Do we, anything?
Thank you, gentlemen.
That's for next week, okay? Any other business, Mr. Clark?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sir. Meeting adjourned.